Good evening. Welcome to the January 22, 2018 Troy City Council Meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Councilman Baker lead us with the invocation. So if you would please stand for that and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father in heaven, we give you thanks for this day and thanks for the many blessings you've bestowed on us here in Troy. We ask that you continue to bless us this evening and throughout the rest of the night and weeks and months ahead. Lord, we ask that you guide us at this table tonight to make good, sound decisions for the residents of Troy, giving them faith and confidence in our abilities to best represent their interests, all of the interests, the diverse interests in the city, providing reasonable solutions and making a positive impact on our community and its residents. Lord, please be with those who are in need of your guidance and help and especially those who may not be able to ask you themselves. They need it more than anybody. Be with us always. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Baker. Troy City Council Meeting is now called to order. The real call, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Slater?
Here.
Mayor Protem Abraham?
Here.
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Here.
Councilmember Pennington?
Councilman Pennington will be here shortly, so we won't deal with an absent. He should be here anytime. First on the agenda are certificates of recognition and special presentations. There are none this evening. There are no carryover items or public hearings. I don't see that anyone has signed up for public comment. Four items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. There are no postponed items, so we will move to regular business. I I, Board and Committee nominations, mayoral appointments. I would like to make move one this evening. I would like to move Frank Strahl for the appointment to the Board of Review for the term that expires 1/31/2021.
Support.
Moved by the Chair, supported by Councilman Baker, that we appoint Frank Strahl to the Board of Review for the term that expires 1/31/2021. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you again to Frank Strahl for volunteering to be on that important committee. Next, our City Council appointments, and I will defer to Mayor Protem Abraham.
I have one appointment to make, and that is to confirm Padma Kupa as the Planning Commissioner Representative on the ZBA Board for the term expiring December 31, 2018. Support?
Moved by Mayor Protem Abraham, supported by Councilwoman Hoderick, that we confirm the appointment of Padma Kupa to the, as the Planning Commission Representative on the ZBA for the term that expires 12/31/2018. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Mayor Protem Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you to Padma for volunteering to do that. I I, too, are Board and Committee nominations. There are no mayoral nominations or City Council nominations this evening, so we will move to I III, which is a request for closed session. Councilman Baker?
I'd like to move I III. Be it resolved that Troy City Council shall meet in closed session as permitted by MCL 15.268-H and MCL 15.243-G.
Support?
By Councilman Baker, supported by Mayor Protem Abraham, that we shall meet in closed session as read into the record and printed in the Agenda Packet. The vote, Ms. Dixon.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Abraham?
Yes.
Motion passes. Welcome, Councilman Pennington.
Thank you.
I I IV is the Standard Purchasing Resolution III, which is exercise renewal option, concrete slab replacement, budget amendment for Somerset Park Apartments slab replacement, along with a budget amendment for local roads, concrete slab replacement, and a budget amendment for the parking lot's surface replacement.
Mayor, if I could, I'll introduce this item.
I wasn't sure if you or Kurt were going to do it.
I was going to introduce it. Any other questions? Obviously, the DPW Director, Bolvin C., is here to answer any questions, but basically there appears to be a lot going on here. Really, there's only two major components, and the first one is the second phase of Somerset Apartments is being asked to be, that money being moved from next year's budget to this year's budget to allow it to be constructed during the construction season, not based on a fiscal year basis. So that's number one, and that will complete that, the Somerset Apartments project. So that's the reappropriation. And then the second is, based on the fund balance policy that we have, it's incumbent upon the City Manager to move forward a plan to bring the fund balance expenditures, or fund balance within 20 to 30 percent of expenditures, and we've been over. You know, at the last meeting, we, you appropriated and approved two fire trucks. This resolution and request takes us back to what we've always done, which is, which are, which is roads. And typically, we were doing major roads. The idea in the last year or so and going forward is to emphasize roads and subdivisions, where the people live, and that's local roads, and that funding is a little more difficult to attain on local roads. And remember, we don't special assess in this community. It's all paid for in full by the general fund and major local streets. So we've also added, that's Section 13, we've also added parking lot replacement, and the first one is the Police Fire Training Center, which has been in the discussions of the budget process, the capital budget process, and Tom can, and so can Kurt, so can the two chiefs back there. It's been a discussion probably for as long as I've been here, and we've continued to push it off and push it off, and we have an opportunity now to take care of that facility and add parking in the back that's not gravel, if you've ever been on the east side of that building. And I know, Mayor, you and I were there last week, or, well, it was a real icy day. That's all I recall.
I remember you slipped, and I didn't.
I did slip. But, so that parking lot needs to be improved, as well as the circle drive in front of the Police Department, we would add into this. The request is to contract with Delicio Contracting, who we've used, and who are willing to extend their prices at no increase. We have a history with Delicio over since Troy Roads Rock I and II, and they have been very, very good to work with and responsive to residents, and we would request moving forward with Delicio again.
Thank you. I know there were several questions by Council that were submitted this evening. Does Council have any further questions? Would you like to move the resolution to get it on the table for discussion?
Yeah, but I don't.
Or I can do that.
Don't get in front of me now. Hold on.
I'll move it.
There we go.
Councilman Pennington?
I'd like to move I IV, Standard Purchasing Resolution III, Exercise Renewal Option on the Concrete Slab Replacement Budget Amendment, Somerset Park Apartments Slab Replacement Budget Amendment, Local Roads Concrete Slab Replacement Budget Amendment, and Parking Lot Surface Replacement as printed and explained.
Support?
By Councilman Pennington, and supported by Councilwoman Hoderick, that we approve I IV, which was read by Councilman Pennington and printed in the Agenda Packet. Discussion, Councilwoman Hoderick.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question on this, but if I'm going to drill down just a little further, because now it's coming into my head how to drill down. I understand the relationship with Delicio and how we have been able to move traffic better on our roads. We have, we have a really good thing going on with them when they're, when they're paving our roadways and whatnot. So the slab replacement piece of it, we're not bidding it out because we know we're getting a competitive cost there and a good relationship with them is, on the slab replacement. On the parking lots, is there any reason we wouldn't bid out? Is there benefit to not bidding out for the parking lot piece of this project? That's my new question.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Typically, we would bid out parking lot replacement to individual projects. However, it is typical that we do asphalt parking lots. The training center is unique, but it's currently asphalt at four inches, which is not a sufficient thickness of asphalt to support the heavy vehicles like fire trucks that go in and out of the facility. So for at least the last three years, we started recommending that that parking lot be replaced with concrete. So it becomes a remove and replace program. It's certainly something that we could bid out, however, in the circumstance that we're faced with today, with using this fund balance by June 30th, that project is not fully engineered. So again, it becomes a design and construct project where we already have a contract in place, the slab replacement contract is a design and construct, construct, contract. Therefore, it is our recommendation that we use our current concrete slab replacement contract because of the rates are competitive in that parking lot, both parking lot projects.
Okay. And because it's slab repla, it's okay if I, my apologies. Because it's slab replacement and the design, we're kind of doing this in parallel, that makes bidding out, to send it out for the bid, you need all the details of what you're doing. Is this what you're saying to me, so that the time is of the essence and we wouldn't be able to do that as quickly?
That is absolutely correct.
Any questions for staff? Mayor Protem Abraham?
I think I have, maybe it's a similar question to Councilwoman Hoderick's. You know, we've, you know, last year, about half of this project was paved, Gulfview, well, it was the three streets. It wasn't Somerset. So we knew that this was going to be coming in this calendar year and certainly part of this fiscal year. So I hear what you're saying about time is of the essence. I guess my question is, if we had put the bid out, I don't know, November, December, would that have been ample time, you know, for, no, Delicio to bid as well as others potentially? What's the lead time for bidding on a project like this?
Sure, just so I fully understand the question, we're specifically talking about Somerset Road and bidding that project out. An ample amount of time for a slab replacement bid is anywhere from two to three months by the time we go through the contract, again, get it to purchasing, it gets let and brought to City Council for approval. I don't think the issue with Somerset is whether or not we had ample amount of time, and we obviously could predict that we wanted to go this route. It's the fact that we're starting a project that we currently have a contract with Delicio, and the construction season is all summer long, where our fiscal year ends June 30th. So we potentially could have two contractors working on the same project if you were to move the funds, half of the funds forward, like we're proposing today. To put it in perspective, you could have one contractor working on one side of the road, and then come July 1st, have a separate contractor working on the other, the opposite side of the road. Not that it can't be done, it just makes it very confusing, and there could be a potential conflict between the contractors taking ownership of, that one did this, this one did that, and, and to have, to have cohesiveness in the project, it would be advantageous to have one single contractor, which is why we're recommending a contract extension with Delicio for that project.
So just to clarify, or confirm what I think I heard, it is, if we went out for bid, it could only go up through the end of this fiscal year, and a second bid would have to go out to, for anything after July? Is that how you could get two different suppliers or construction companies doing it?
We have a current contract with Delicio for slab replacement. Typically, we would not have two contracts in place for slab replacement. So since we have the purchase order and the contract with Delicio for slab replacement, I don't want to say we're committed, but in my opinion, it would be the right thing to do to use Delicio because they have that contract, that approved contract, up until June 30th of this year.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions from Council? Thank you, Kurt. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda is I V, A Report on Current Internal Controls, with a presentation by Jeanette Manning, our Human Resources Director. Good evening, Jeanette.
Okay. Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. As a result of the December 4th council referral from Councilmember Hoderick, I'm here to give a short presentation on our current internal controls and the methods in place for employees to bring ethics or other concerns to the attention of management. As you know, the City Charter and the City Code are the foundation for policies and procedures of the City of Troy. For example, in Chapter 6 of the Charter, we find direction for employees regarding ethical business practices, specifically prohibiting business relationships that would financially benefit an employee involved in the decision or recommendation unless the relationship is revealed. Likewise, Title I, Chapter 4 of the City Code includes a code of conduct for employees. Among other things, the code of conduct addresses the acceptance of gifts, prohibits the use of confidential information for personal financial gain, and prohibits the use of city personnel or resources for personal gain. Violations of the City Code are subject to disciplinary action. The City Code also establishes the Administrative Manual as the method for the City Manager to set policies. The Administrative Manual is comprised of administrative memos. The memos reinforce the code of conduct and provide further direction and detail to employees. As you know, one of the 2017 strategies is to continue to review and update these memos. The Employee Handbook is another method of providing information and educating employees on policies, procedures, and expectations. All employees receive a copy of the handbook upon hire. It's also readily available on the intranet for easy access. So how do employees bring concerns to management? Our union employees have a detailed grievance procedure in each of their contracts. All employees are encouraged to bring concerns through their supervisor first, whenever possible, to allow for easy, accessible reporting. Our whistleblower and harassment and discrimination policies have numerous reporting options. What about internal financial controls? All financial transactions have built-in systems for review and approval. Several functions are designed so that there is a clear separation of duties. Additionally, a financial audit is conducted annually by an outside firm. Due to the nature of their work, the police and fire departments have their own set of policies called general orders and administrative directives. The Police Department has detailed staff inspections processes for specific issues that may arise. Also, external complaints are investigated and included in their annual report published for public review. Just as the Police Department operates within legal parameters, actions of the Fire Department are determined by the National Fire Protection Association, as well as MIOSHA and ISO. Some aspects to consider regarding a review committee are discipline timelines and the possible additional steps that could be required. Efforts that could be made to ensure a safe reporting culture within our existing processes are a reemphasis of our whistleblower policy to all employees at all levels, training and small group discussions that could review policies and reporting procedures, utilizing training resources that are available through the International City and County Management Association and the Michigan Municipal League. Speaking for the management team who drafted this report, we are eager to take any steps necessary to ensure that employees feel safe and do not fear retribution when they bring concerns to management. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Questions from Council for Jeanette? Councilwoman Hoderick?
This was my fault. I sent the staff and probably fellow council members into a whirling tizzy with their thinking, but I think it's a good exercise for us to go through, and I want to express my appreciation for, I'm sure, the time that was spent and thinking it through. You know, the environment surrounding all of us, these kinds of topics are coming up all the time, and I said this in the last meeting, this is what I do and watch for a living now in the private sector. And so I spitballed something to make sure, you know, just make sure that we as a staff are protecting the integrity and creating the safest work environments and the best environments for us to work with all due ethics and integrity. And I want to throw out my original resolution and start it over, reflecting this input. In setting up a committee, I hear what you're saying, what that could do for the employees that serve on the committee. It would completely undermine my original goal, which is to make a really positive work environment, this to be the go-to city where you want to be employed because you know it works with integrity. That's what we've had, that's what I'm seeking to protect, and I don't want to remove that. I do think that when we look to the tenants of the ICMA and MML, which is, I think, what the staff is already doing, but let's reinforce that, recommit ourselves, even as council members, to that, and as an entire staff body, our residents that we're serving can feel more confident and have more trust in all the work that we do. And that's my intent, is to create a reinforcement to really bolster our reputation in this regard, because this is something the city's been known for, and I really want to protect that. So I appreciate the time employees spent going through this, and recognizing that if you work in the Police Department, there's one set of factors that helps you shape this and guides you. If you're in DPW, that's another, it's a culture within a staff culture, if you will, that, boy, do we want to protect. So, you know, folks might have questions, but I guess I want my fellow council members to know, I want to go back and revisit that original resolution I wrote with this information in mind, and still look at how we reconfirm and reaffirm what you all are already doing, and ensure that we keep moving forward with that to protect that legacy.
Any other comments from Council? Thank you, Jeanette. Thanks for your work. Next on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Any council member wish to pull a consent agenda item this evening? Councilman Henderson?
I'd like to move all items on the consent agenda as printed.
Support? By Councilman Henderson, supported by Councilman Pennington, that we approve all items on the consent agenda as presented in the Agenda Packet this evening. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoderick?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Motion passes. If you were here this evening for a consent agenda item, they've all been approved. Next, our Memorandums and Future Council Agenda Items. There was a memorandum and future council agenda item placed on the City Council table this evening on a yellow sheet, and I will make that announcement, that on February the 5th, 2018, there will be a public hearing for the reprogramming of the Community Development Block Grant, better known as CDBG, program for the year 2016 funds. Next is public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses, and I'll call upon Terry Wickman, Troy resident who wishes to speak.
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir. I live at 1771 North Lake Drive. I'm right at the entrance of the Rain Tree Village, the Mondrian build. We had an issue before Christmas where they were laying cement, and after they were done, they took it upon themselves to clean the trucks off in the street, which allowed all the liquid from the trucks to go down the sewer, and the remaining concrete and gravel, probably a foot wide along four houses. Then they took it upon themselves to take the sweeper and swept all that on our front lawns. I asked him why, and he said that they were told by the City of Troy to keep the streets clean. Now, I've got an issue with spring coming. Fire up the lawnmower, it's going to be like a shootout, personal injury, property damage. I'm kind of wondering, where do I go with this? I've, whatever, I've had issues with these people, and, you know, and it's, some of it's really simple things, like instead of 10 gravel haulers down North Lake Drive, how about five? So when we get home, we can get into our driveways, which I can count on more than both of these hands, not being able to get access to my property. And I had one incident where the guy was in front of my house. I told him to move. He goes, where am I supposed to go? I said, to where the project is. It got verbal. He was told to go home. He went home, or he took his truck back, got his car, came to the front of my house and said, come on out, mother effer, you want a piece of me. And it's, you know, there's just little things, maybe, I don't know who I talked to, but there's little things, like from the 10 to five trucks. You can back it up, pull it forward, let us in. You know, the sweeping, you know, they swept for three and a half weeks without water. So I got ahold of Mondrian, and we made a decision that they would have an industrial, like the City of Troy has, the big sweeper, because he wasn't adding water. He was just, you know, dust everywhere. And, you know, obviously, I lived there, so, you know, things aren't clean. Anyway, this went on and on. So I called Mondrian, we agreed to the sweeper. Well, two days later, this guy's out there sweeping again. So I got Anita on the phone, who's the rep for Mondrian, and told her, you know, and I wanted this guy to talk to her. Well, he wouldn't. It got hot. He told me he didn't work for Mondrian. So she hung up the phone and called the John R. Project and had a supervisor come.
Mr. Wickman, if you would just hang around until this council meeting is over, and it'll be at about 10 minutes, I'm sure someone from staff would sit down and talk to you.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on Aaron Green, Troy resident who wishes to speak. Good evening.
Evening, Council. I just wanted to talk briefly. I hadn't gelled my thoughts after the study session. It's not incumbent on the City of Troy to change public perception of cannabis. That's up to the cannabis industry. However, with the tide turning on the issue, despite our antebellum and morally backward Attorney General, I think the time will come. This isn't about ruining a bedroom community with bad neighbors. An industry, an industrial hog farm is a bad neighbor, a sawmill is a bad neighbor. They're a quiet, low odor if we set the right limits in business. I don't smoke. I have no interest in going to prison. I'm allergic to jail. I am, however, pro-legalization. The perception of pot and medical dispensaries is driven by what has been allowed and seen in economically depressed areas, at least broadly speaking in this area. Westland took a look at Detroit and said, no, thank you. Ann Arbor? Ann Arbor looked at Denver and California and said, "Please." And I think it just comes down to which one of those are we, or neither. Again, it's not a hard sell, of course, that we have to opt in. It's not a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. I don't think we're a community where if we accept or if we opt in, we're going to gain an enormous amount of tax revenue immediately or anything of that sort, or a community's going to start booming where it wasn't previously. But I think it is inevitable, and when we eventually do allow more diverse operations and larger ones, I don't think they're going to be like what we see in Detroit. I think they're going to be like what we see in Colorado and elsewhere, and since opting out isn't permanent, I do suggest that we opt out, but that we definitely revisit in a couple of years when things are clarified and we feel more comfortable. So.
Thank you. Next, I'll call on Aaron Layatt, Troy resident who wishes to speak. Good evening.
I'm Aaron of, I'm Aaron Layatt of Troy, Troy Trails, Troy Trails and Pathways. I don't have any, anything formal to say today, though I am here to exercise my ability to speak and be heard and be seen. But I want to talk about greenways, green spaces. The city, the folks here at City Hall have been kind of fomenting emotions surrounding the green spaces in Troy. It's been kind of a cold topic, but it's there, and I noticed it, and I want to, I want to point out to the people listening that I've hiked around the city, I've ridden around the city, I'm a bicyclist, and I've noticed that there's a network of green spaces around Troy, river routes, drainage routes. Now, these emotions that the folks here at City Hall are stirring in the public are, in my opinion, notions of stasis, of having people not wanting to develop the green spaces. But as a bicyclist, as a person educating themselves on, educating themselves on bicycle developments, bicycle infrastructure developments, I see that developing green spaces is inevitability, or, you know, it's something that's bound to happen, or something that has a possibility, a very distinct possibility or a chance of being, the green space is being developed. Anyways, I just want to point out that as a bicycle rider, I don't like riding on the roads. It's dangerous, and I want to see the green spaces developed into viable places for people to ride their bikes so people don't have to ride in the road and put themselves in danger. It's stressful, it's not fun, and I hope we could move forward in a meaningful way. Thank you.
I hope so, too. Thank you. That concludes those that have signed up to speak on public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. It's an opportunity for a city council or city administration to respond to the public comment. City Manager Kishnik, could somebody get with Mr. Wickman after the meeting and...
I will do that.
Thank you, sir. Comments from council? Councilman Hamilton?
I would just say, Aaron, on February 1st at 6:00 PM, we're going to have our first Parks and Rec Green Space Board meeting, so I'd love to hear about how we can add bicycle infrastructure to our green space. That'd be a great topic to bring up there, so I recommend you and anyone else interested attend that. February 1st, 6:00 PM, and that's here. Where is it?
In the boardroom.
In the boardroom. Okay. Yep.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hoderek?
What Councilman Hamilton said, I think, just to reinforce, I think we feel like we're repeating ourselves, but sometimes it's the first time people are hearing. Council did give direction to form a green space advisory committee. It's a subteam of the Parks and Rec Board, and folks came together. There was a first meeting where they talked, and that subcommittee is being formed. Other folks can certainly attend, and it will be fascinating going forward. I look forward to hearing from them, from that team, what they learn, what they find. Just a little plug for Aaron's work out there and his studies. I think he has a Twitter account out there, the Trails and Pathways. I've been following, and he often will have articles about things that are going on around our nation, and I think the more we educate and talk to, look at what the possibilities are, you can see that Troy is just really ripe for taking advantage of a lot of great things, so in terms of pathways. And Mayor Slater was, he drove this conversation quite a bit for a number of years here where we keep looking at trying to move forward. So the more the community can engage in the what-if-ing and ideating about the potential, and the more we have the dialogue, the better the outcomes for the long haul. So appreciate you coming in and bringing it up here.
Any other comments from council? There are no council referrals this evening, so we'll move to N1. I'm sorry, there is a council referral this evening from Councilmember Hamilton, N1, and I will defer to him this evening.
Thank you. I've heard from lots of residents that want a livestream of our council meetings, and we do have a livestream of our council meetings available on Ustream. However, a lot of residents aren't aware of it, and a lot of residents have had issues with it, having ads or not always being reliable. So my recommendation is that we broadcast all our council meetings using Facebook Live. And so I didn't, I don't have a formal resolution, but I'd just like to open a discussion and see if we can have consensus to direct the city to broadcast our meetings using Facebook Live.
Thank you. I think it might be best to see if there's consensus to have city management bring back a report or a resolution to prepare so that, from my perspective, I don't have any idea what, I'm not a Facebook guy, so I don't have any, I'd like to be educated on it myself.
Fair point.
I don't have any problem supporting consensus to ask staff to give us a report with a potential resolution.
I agree.
Looks like you have consensus.
I just have one question.
Yes, sir.
So are we only talking about city council meetings, or are we talking about all the other meetings, like Planning Commission, ZBA? Help me out, where's Cindy? LDFAs?
Oh, LDFAs.
LDFAs. I think you get the idea. Are we talking about all of them or just council meetings or...
I'd say all of them. I mean, we can look at, if there's a cost issue with that, but I'd like to look at...
I know there's a cost issue. I would like to know what breakdown, myself. Councilman Baker?
Do we livestream all those meetings now on the Ustream? Does anybody know? We do, all of those are on, they're all, okay. I know they're on YouTube after the fact, but I wasn't sure if they were also livestreamed.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you. Next is council comments. Any comments from council this evening? Councilman Hamilton?
This Wednesday at 6:00 PM at the Community Center, we're having another Civic Center discussion from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, so I recommend everyone come attend that. And at the Public Library, there's a discussion on the opioid epidemic. I believe it's at 7:30, correct me if I'm wrong. So I'm going to try to attend both if I can, depending on how long the, it might be 7:00 PM. I don't remember the exact time on the opioid discussion, but it's really important for our community as well. I'd also really like to thank Kurt Bovenseep for his amazing effort to fix a lighting issue on John R. between Square Lake and Long Lake. It's mentioned in our reports, and a resident, Mr. McBride, brought this up at our last council meeting, and in that area of John R., there's been accidents, there's been fatal pedestrian accidents, and with the new development there, the lighting on John R. wasn't that great, and Kurt really quickly jumped in and found a solution to improve that. So thank you so, I just wanted to really thank you for that. That was great response to resident concern.
Just to confirm, it does start at 7:00 PM at the library, the opioid presentation?
Thank you. Yep.
Councilman Baker?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Hamilton brought up the fact that the Troy Civic Center Conversation will be happening again this Wednesday. At the last one, it was very well attended, and the feedback I heard from residents that were there was very positive. One of the things that came up was that we're always talking about with city management, us on council, is how to advertise these things to the public and how to get general city information out, other than, you know, we have a Facebook page, we do Twitter, we do press releases for certain things, but I had asked city manager about, I took a recommendation from someone that I spoke to at the Civic Center Conversation, and I asked the city manager about whether or not, you know, how we utilize our Troy TV channel and what information gets advertised on there, because the question was, is it possible to have a regular segment that airs on that channel that someone could tune into and say, "Oh, okay, this is when the meetings are in Troy. These are the important meetings or important upcoming events." So I emailed the city manager, and he forwarded to Cindy Stewart, our Community Affairs Director, who works primarily with the TV channel, and she responded that she was actually looking at putting together some kind of little regular programming, I don't know if it's a program piece, that would provide something like that information on a regular basis. So that's something that we are, that's feedback that we got, and we're trying to look into making that a reality for people. It's tough to get information out, you know, we talk about this meeting, sometimes you see it in the paper a little bit, but, and, you know, not a lot of people watch the channel that I know, but then on the flip side, I hear a lot of people do. So we're hoping that if maybe we can get a little segment produced that's at a regular time, people will know, at least they can go there to look for information, to know when an upcoming important meeting is. So I'm anxious to hear how that works out, if it's something we can work out, and thankful that it was already in process before I even asked about it. So thank you for that. Also, oh, no, that was it. I got it. You got everything. Thank you.
Comments from council? Councilman Henderson?
Just one clarification. The opioid conversation is at the library.
Correct.
And the Civic Center Conversation is at the Community Center.
Any other comments from council? Next are reports. There were some very important reports included in the packet. I would encourage anyone listening or watching to read those reports. I thought they were very informative today. Mayor Protam Abraham?
I just wanted to comment on P2G and P2H, which is Police Social Media slash Traditional Media Emergency Communications and Mass Notification and Emergency Alert Systems. I just wanted to express my thanks for having those two reports included. This is something that we struggle with, I think, all the time. I recall, I think it was November 2016, Kurt, where the water, there was a water main break in the northeast quadrant, and I remember getting emails from you at 5:00 in the morning about it, and despite the fact that it was on the news, on, you know, TV, radio, Facebook, we still had people saying, you know, "I didn't hear about it. I've been drinking my water," when I was on a boil water advisory. So it's something that we constantly struggle with, so I appreciate all the efforts by staff to look at and evaluate ways that we can push these urgent messages out to the community. It can be quite critical, so thank you.
Any comments from council? We got any reports? I don't see that anyone has signed up for comments on items on or not on the agenda from members of the public outside of Troy. There is a closed session this evening, so we will recess and meet in the boardroom for that closed session. Thank you for coming this evening.